And let's say there's somebody that's, I mean, it's not that you're gonna take responsibility for it, but you guys are patrolling, you keep your eye on it a little bit. No different than somebody being out of town for some period of time and letting, letting your department know that they're gone so that you're aware of what's going on.
This time of year, I saw those down there, Mike, it's not a...
No.
Crisis.
It's not a crisis, but...
Obviously, if they did it a different time of year, that'd be, they just kind of, they wouldn't know that, you're right, they should probably ask permission because what if Jim was going in to do some work there? And now they left him there thinking, oh, nobody's using this, it's cool, and it's really not.
Right.
They might not know we had the plans for that.
I'm up to prohibition number 26.
You don't go that high.
Seventeen is the...
Okay, you have no commercial, on the old one, you had no commercial boat may use a dock, a town dock or wharf in one hour without written permission?
Yeah.
Excuse me, sixty, that one.
Yep.
Can, would it be appropriate to say, "Or designate"?
I think that's what Bill had talked about earlier. I mean, I spoke to the three of you, and Bill had talked about that should be. He, I, I, I think you, didn't you say that earlier, Bill, you kind of thought that should be for this one?
Yeah.
I'll let the three of you hash that out.
The next question I had as far as penalties?
Yeah.
Why don't we just say these are a violation? And if there's any, and if you issue a summons, it goes to court?
Because this allows us to do a parking ticket. So we do a parking ticket, and they can pay it within forty-eight hours, so maybe we could do the other. It's, that's either way.
I have no problem with the first level being a parking ticket. And who will be taking the money? Is it similar to Clay where he takes money in?
It says fines paid within forty-eight hours at Tuffinborough Police Station. I believe that kind of section I got from the Wolfboro ordinance, how they had it set up. But I mean, yeah, you're right, we could do it just as a violation and...
Okay, I'll take that. All the other things, you know, the first one is a warning, and the second, this or that? Well, you have discretion to issue a warning or not.
Definitely.
Or issue a summons. Why don't we just say it's a violation of law? And if you guys issue a summons for violating town ordinance, it goes to court, right?
I'm not, well, I guess I, I can understand your point as far as clear description. Except that... I don't want to preclude them coming in paying the fine.
On hindsight, I could say I have no problem with that.
That's what this is largely, is parking tickets.
Yeah. I think we need to follow away to court with our domestic problems over here.
That's, that's what happens if we did, they don't address it, then we'd have to go beyond that.
Then we have to go to court. But yeah, as long as we, as long as we describe it appropriately, we can take it to court.
And, that's right, if they don't pay within the forty-eight hours, then we would be... And I think we talked before about extending that case was a weekend, if I recall.
Yeah. Yep.
So you want to say business days?
They don't work on weekends?
No, but if somebody goes out to the island...
If it's a three-day weekend and they're, and they're parked in violation, then, and the, and the ticket goes on the vehicle the first day?
They can't pay within forty-eight hours.
Then, yeah, then they come back off the island on...
Sunday night going...
Or Monday night, and it's, yeah, and they're...
Or Monday night if it's Saturday, yeah, three-day weekend, they'll come back Monday afternoon, Monday night going, I got this Friday night, and now it's after the forty-eight hours.
So they have two business days?
Yeah, if we say within two business days with that.
I mean, for example, Labor Day, you're out patrolling, and this guy, you put the ticket on Friday night, and he doesn't come back till Monday night, he hasn't till Wednesday to go...
Take care of it.
Take care of it.
Two business days, does that, does that work for you?
I'm good with more as long as it's a deadline.
Yeah.
Even five, I'm fine with.
Yeah.
Whatever, if somebody has to go home and send a check, I'm good with that too. I'm not real married to the number of hours so much as there's a deadline so that we know.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I think even five would be better. Just give a week, I don't care. It's not like I'm gonna, I'm in a rush to...
Arrest them.
Right.
Charge them and send them out.
And at least they can then mail it in, and like, that's what...
That's what I'm thinking about.
Slowly, slowly.
Right.
Yeah, they can go snail mail with it and...
Now, last page, you say vehicle, boats, trailers and other items. That's exactly what we've been talking about. Bob house, bob house on a trailer, snowmobile burned up, debris, I guess. And the last two things, administrative provisions and severability and amendments. Excellent. I'm all set.
Again, I copied that from Wolfboro, so, much as I like the kudos for it, I told somebody else, I mean, bargain. I was careful, I didn't just, I read it and made sure it fit.
Okay.
One, one other thing on parking, if we're done with this. This is the parking regulation that we received in December?
Yeah.
Okay. Here, I drew a little map. If you read that, what does that talk about? It talks about from here to the bridge, correct?
Where are we, boy?
We're down by...
Pier nineteen.
Pier nineteen, the one oh nine, the thing that, yes, to the bridge.
Okay.
It sits south end of Bridge High, really, yeah.
Okay. Which section talks about this area here that they haven't posted? From...
That is posted.
That's posted.
But is Union Wharf Road headed back toward Melbourne?
Yep, that's posted.
That's all posted?
Yeah, three hundred fifty feet north.
And those, that's where we had the problem where there were no signs last year.
Well, there was one sign way up.
There was one sign way up saying, "No parking."
Right, but there are now, there are now signs there with arrows.
That say, "No parking from here, that way."
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then it says, "No parking between signs," and it spells it out. The only, the only issue there is, it says to the end of the sidewalk, and they went like at a hundred feet beyond there.
Right, so, have you talked about it?
I haven't talked to them yet, but...
All right, well, now that the snow is getting cleared out of there, people are gonna wanna be parking in that area now.
I did, just reading that now, it does say in there, "To the end of the sidewalk," and they went...
Right. So is that something that the guys up here at the garage can take care of?
I'm gonna talk to them, see if they can take care of that.
Yeah. Point out, hey, you went a little too far with that.
Somebody went too far. I think it's a different division.
Well, maybe they can adjust it.
But they could adjust it, probably.
And as long as the cars that are parked off the tire on one oh nine, they're, I mean, we've had no accidents or...
Had no accidents, no issues, we haven't raised a problem, so...
And the other thing is...
The problem is if they park to the north with that three hundred fifty, we had that last year.
Gets real narrow.
It gets, while it also, when you come out through the wharf, it becomes obstruction to view for the vehicles coming out of Union Wharf.
And you got the sightlines coming down the hill, the other way, that's an issue.
Yeah, for the, for the lakeside of it.
And in the parking lot, the sign says, you know, there's no trailers unattached.
Yeah.
I know a couple people said, I come up with my, put my boat in and go out, and the wife uses the car to run downtown.
It's overnight unattached.
I think you folks have used some discretion there.
I think it's, and it's, I think it's pretty spelt out.
The ordinance talks about it not being left unattached overnight.
Yes, so that, you can do that. You can go do your shopping during the day, doctor's appointments, whatever you need to do, but at night, hook it back up. And honestly, if it's sitting right there, like it could have been hooked up, we're not making people put the wires back in.
What we don't wanna do is have that be long-term trailer storage.
Well, that's what was happening in the past.
What we don't wanna do is have somebody come up, put their trailer there, and then drive home for the, the next week, and it's still sitting there the whole week. We do have a trailer storage here at the transfer station, right?
We had a problem with that because we had somebody who lived in town here, and this blew me away. I can understand, maybe you drove up from another state, and now you put your boat out, and now you don't wanna drive it all the way back. This was somebody who lived in town here.
Yeah.
Who obviously kept their boat on the trailer for the rest of the year, but for the summer, left their trailer right there on the edge of the parking lot, and then screamed when they lost, the way I found out is like, either their plate was taken or a tire was taken off it, and I'm like, okay, we'll do what we can on that, but...
Well, it's a public property, we don't have any liability here.
I understand that, but, 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 no, and I don't think they were saying liability-wise on us, but it was like, investigate this, but it drew my attention to, if you live right in town, why didn't you just put it back in here?
Yeah.
And, but that was happening, is we had a bunch of people leaving their trailers, and it's cluttering up, and interfering with those with cars that wanted to park here too.
And there are three times a year where it's a funnel, where we don't have enough room, but the rest of the time, it seems to be functional.
All right. Anything else for the chief?
No, thank you very much, Chief. I guess the next step is to have the final draft?
And I'll, I'll work on it again, and we'll rehash this.
And we have a public hearing at some point, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you again. Happy spring.
Yeah, finally. They're saying tomorrow.
Yes.
All right. Other things for today? Let's see, on the agenda is procurement policy. If you had a chance to look at this.
I did.
That, that is the letter that we received from FEMA last November, calling us out for not having procurement, procurement policy. And it's very detailed, eleven pages long, goes through, they, it's, it's apparent to me that they reviewed the situation thoroughly, and have identified specific things that we don't do that are in, that are required under federal policy.
Right.
So, I think we just, we need to start working on coming up with a policy. And as I read through this thing and thought about it, what makes the most sense is, and with your permission, I will do this, spend a little time with Chief Thompson, and, and also to reach out to the state person, Fallon Reed, and see if they have a...
Boilerplate sample?
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're not the first small town, I'm sure, that's come up against us, and the, the things that they're saying in here that aren't in what we do, they aren't in what we do. What we do is, is fully compliant with state statute, but the basic bottom line is, if you want reimbursement for these things from, from the feds, you have to go beyond that. You have to have all kinds of difficult things, so...
Just a thought, you're gonna be meeting in Moulton Borough with other towns, they might have already invented a wheel for it.
Could be, yeah, yeah.
I had found them to be excellent.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, I agree. So, if that makes sense, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just keep, keep it on the, I don't wanna let it die, and then whenever down the road we run into the same situation again. Right. We have to, if we get ourselves into a FEMA reimbursement situation in the future, I am fairly confident that they, they're not gonna forget what they told us the last time, and if we haven't done anything to, to try and comply, then it's gonna be harder to get them to say, uh, these guys are...
And it could apply to things other than, right? Federal grants, projects?
Well, it applies to, it applies to any, any federal money that the town...
And in our lifetime, Chip, you and I, we've had major situations here or in the area, for example, Muggs Shaw fire, that ever happened again, we would need FEMA and everybody else helping us, so...
Yeah.
I think that's wise.
But there may be some energy grant money that's gonna come in.
Yeah.
Those would happen in the next ten or fifteen years.
All right, another item for action today. As we all remember, we got involved with Lakes Region Planning Commission on electricity, power purchase last year, and they're now working on a group RFP on propane and fuel oil. And as, as a part of that, he's, Jeff Hayes is looking for the towns to say, just like we did with, with power, yes, I'm interested in participating in the process, and...
That's impressive.
As, as you're going through the RFP, we're not gonna be shopping on the side for the same thing. Once the proposals are in, we can either sign on to the bid that's come in for this group purchase, or go out and do our own thing separately.
Afterwards, but not before.
But not while, right. We can't, we, we don't wanna be shopping against ourselves in this process.
It's a parallel program to electricity. We didn't go out sending out...
Right.
While you were working on the proposal for electricity.
So this memorandum of understanding that he sent through, I'll read it, says, "The town of Tuffinborough authorizes LRPC to issue an RFP on our behalf to take part in a regional propane and/or oil joint purchase initiative. We understand this means jointly issuing an RFP to purchase oil and/or propane at a group rate. We agree not to shop around during the joint bidding process so that our group will have a stable purchasing volume for bidders to base their bid price on. We further understand that we are under no obligation to accept the joint bid price if it is not competitive for our town to do so." So...
Do you need a motion?
I would entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
A second?
All right, any discussion?
No, I, I'm gonna continue my efforts to get the same price for every resident at Tuffinborough.
I like that.
But, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, all right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we do have some other signature items, might as well go ahead and get, and deal with them while we're here, not let them sit another week and a half. I have yield tax levies here for sixteen dash two dash three, fifteen dash three dash thirty-five, and forty-two dash one dash twelve. Entertain a motion to approve those?
I'll move the levy sign off.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
And I will just be editing the dates on those then, okay? For the date that Jackie will bill, so I'll just have to make it...
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah.
So she'll bill...
Yeah.
How long will it be today on Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Next, I have a supplemental intent to excavate and gravel tax levy for fifty-five dash two dash seven. And the supplemental, this is, this is on a intent, intent to excavate that was for twenty seventeen, expired March thirty-first, and the supplemental is because he actually excavated more than what he had in his, in the intent, so, and then the gravel tax levy is on the material that was removed. So I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll move to sign that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. And this was something that was clarified in the discussion at the planning board meeting the night that Mary Pinkham Langer was here. That is that if you excavate material and you put it in a pile on your property, and it's not where it's finally going, it's not at a final destination, whether it's off your property or on your property, then it's subject to the tax.
Technically, it's in transit, I guess.
Right, the only time it's not subject to the tax is if it's, if you excavate it for use on the land, and then it's in its final, final place.
Do you want me to date this, Karen?
I can change all that if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I'm just, just...
Oh, yeah, that one, if you wanna do it, it's mine, I'll fill it.
All right.
Did I listen?
Yeah, okay, I've got an intent to cut for thirty-one dash one dash two.
I'll move signature.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And I have two intent to excavates here. These are both existing pits that are not permitted, that have, that, that don't require permitting because they're not expanding the existing excavation.
Really?
So...
What's that? Taking more up, but having not impacted anything?
Well, they're not including the square area of the pit.
They're, 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 they're not expanding the open area, so, you know, once the vegetation's been, been back to a certain extent, as long as you continue, once you start to expand the size of the pit, then you get an issue. So one is for three dash one dash twenty-four, the other one is sixty-seven dash one dash three.
I'll move to be signing them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the only other signature item I have is the Avatar Online Tax Assessment Curbs, and they're gonna be coming in on the twenty-third. Is that right to answer any questions we got on that?
And didn't we have a, Jackie asked us to sign something about taking property for taxes, or?
She, that's, that's in the correspondence, and it's, she's, that's, May eighth is the, is the tax deeding date. That's, yeah, still sitting right there.
So this is just another question that requires action on our part?
That is just, that's, that's correct.
Okay, great.
And she did tell me the other day that, that some of these are, start to come out of the woodwork to...
Pay their taxes.
To pay their taxes.
I kinda zeroed in, and talking with her, maybe there's two we ought to pursue, but I had a question on one of them.
Yeah.
On one of them, it's in an association, and in the past, the town, I remember years ago, before I was a selectman, there was an issue in Hidden Valley. And in talking with Jackie, her understanding was that we're not responsible for monthly fees, annual fees, and what my suggestion would be is we get, zero in on this, is have Karen contact the municipal association, and we just get a ruling on it, so, I know some towns do pay the fees, some towns don't.
Well, I, I know in workshops that I've been in with respect to tax deeding property, one of the things that they, they always point out is, in a situation where it would incur an ongoing obligation to the town, you don't, you, you don't wanna do that. For instance, North Country Village has monthly fees to the owners in there, so if we, if we take a property in North Country Village by tax deed, then we owe that monthly maintenance fee.
Yeah, I think there's two schools about that. The property owes the money.
Well...
And we're the owner, we're not obligated to pay it. They can put a lien on the property for that amount of money, so that when it goes to auction or sale, it's subject to, you know, that lien, it's not, we can't offer that property without that, and that's one often has, so it's accumulating debt going forward. Or we can pay it, hope that we get it out at the other end of the auction, but I, I don't think we should preclude taking property based upon possible fees.
Maybe when we get to that point is, ask the municipal association to give us a current...
Yeah, I think you're right there.
My guidance?
I'm sure if they're not paying their taxes, they're not paying the fees, there's probably some negotiation.
You know, and in fairness to Jackie, she's been doing this long enough, how she coaxes money out of people and, and...
Well, it's to their benefit.
When people tell me, when people tell me it's a compliment, they're coming in to see Jackie every month, she's doing something right, so...
Well, and I'm not sure that some of these folks that are so far in arrears that the tax, that the property is up for tax deeding, understand that in order to hold the wolf away from the door, if you will, all they have to do is pay the third year ago's obligation at this point.
Right.
And it buys them another year. Once it's deeded to the town, they gotta pay all the back taxes and fees to get it back. So now you got three years' worth, plus if it's not owner operated, there's a mandatory, I think it's fifteen percent penalty.
Yeah.
So, anyway, all right. Other things that I'll mention here are invitation to bid for the old code officer vehicle. They're due on next Friday, and the bids will be open in our meeting on the twenty-third. I have a note here from Clay, speaking to the discussion we had on Monday about his being involved with the road agent, and saying that he does, does not, so, although I'm very honored that you would propose this extra responsibility and pulling my name for consideration in this issue, so...
Dismissed.
Yeah. He's, he's told me that he had, Jim had a good discussion after that, and not...
Good, great.
Not ready to, to go there. Do we wanna talk anymore about the schedule for the last half of the year, the, the meeting schedule? We can, we can leave that for another day?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm hoping there'll be a cake on the twenty-fourth of September, just saying.
What? Oh, free, yeah. There is a Basic Law of Budgeting Workshop that's, that's part, just, just one part of the Annual Budget Conference that they do. It's two hours, six to eight, at Ospe Town Hall on Thursday, May tenth.
Six in the evening?
Six in the evening, yeah.
It's not a morning meeting?
No, it's not a morning meeting, sorry about that.
Basic budget.
Basic, basic budgeting, yeah.
And what day is it?
It's Thursday, May tenth. It's Thursday, May 10th.
May 10th?
Yep.
If more than one selectman decides to go, do we have to notice?
I think we just, we just notice it, it's not a big deal. I'm planning to attend, I think my, you know...
I'm 50/50 whether I can make it.
It's, my experience with these things is even though I hear the same basic stuff again and again, I come back with either a renewed appreciation or a little different appreciation for some of the stuff that's out there.
Or there's a new nuance since we went through it last.
Right, exactly.
Talking about, just help both of you for that. I can register you two for, avoid if you wanna do it. And then the budget committee itself meets on the 8th through Tuesday.
Yes, would you...
Would you like to do it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we'll just post it as...
Almost the whole budget committee is on too.
Thursday, May 10th, yep. 6:00 PM, Ospe Town Hall. And you did extend that to the CIP committee and the budget committee, right?
That's correct, I don't know from CIP yet, but now that Chip's going to, I think the whole, almost the whole budget committee is gone, so...
Good.
So I'll post that as well.
And you wanna take for that day too?
No, no, although it is, May 10th is my grandson's birthday, so maybe you can get him.
You can help him, right? All right.
I'll bring him along.
I'll just mention this, National Drug Takeback Day, Prescription Drug Takeback Day, Saturday, April 28th, from 10 until 2. And we will have a police officer up at the transfer station to collect...
Your drugs.
Any medications.
It was a success last...
All right. Now I'm gonna go into the other correspondence unless anybody feels...
There was nothing in there that I thought.
Yeah, particularly, any other public business? We do have two non-publics to do this morning. Any other public?
I have nothing.
So I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public for consideration of legal advice.
I'll make a motion of going to non-public for consideration of legal advice.
Second?
I'll second.
All right.
Would, yes?
Marcusson, yes?
I'll be yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.